We're good?
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So, good evening. I would like to call the October 23rd, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Uh, can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Absolutely. It's always, it always counts. Alright. So, I don't have any announcements and as we're in the selectmen's office and a limited crowd there, it's the assumption nobody's here for anything not currently on our printed agenda. So, I'm going to move right into item one, which is the approval of refunding bond sale and signed bonds. Um, and we have Gene and possible votes. Do I need to read this?
I'm gonna defer to Clark and Cheryl.
Do I need to read this?
You don't have to.
Oh, thank the gods.
You can, but often people will say, "Well, it's in the record, just voting this." Sometimes either Treasurer Cheryl or I would just walk you through it just for the summary, whatever you prefer.
I prefer the summary.
Okay.
You, I'm gonna just go over what happened first.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, on Monday, the town went to market and sold bonds. We had twelve competitive bids, which I passed out to you. So, tonight, I'm here to get the board's approval of the awardment of the bond to JP Morgan Securities. And they had a true interest cost of 3.1268.
So, if you apply the premium to that, then you'd get the true interest rate to the coupon rate? Is that...
You did receive a large premium, so if you notice in the form of the vote, coupons are all fours and fives, but with the premium, benefit of the premium. And you're, what premium means is you sold 12 million dollars of bonds, but you got another million four in premium, I believe.
Million three twenty-seven.
Yep.
And, um, so it brings the TIC, the True Interest Cost, the Effective Borrowing Rate, down to the 3.13%.
This was better than what was expected and forecasted.
Yep.
I always like it when you guys do that.
It was, it was a very tough day. It's been a tough market. You hit things really well. Um, the market was pretty fire for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of last week. Taxes and rates didn't move anywhere. As Cheryl and Gene know, I love Monday sales because they get attention, because larger deals don't come on Monday. You were the largest competitive sale in the country on Monday.
Wow.
And...
Look at you, Gene.
We're on the map.
I mean, you're still seven bids in the last twelve seconds.
And we'll note, Matt, there's no cheekiness from Gene.
No, no cheeky.
Now, we were going, our savings projected were about 700,000 before. Does that increase now as a result of this to, what's the new?
I'll let Clark talk about that.
Yeah, the present value savings is about 840,000. The budgetary savings is a little over a million dollars. The budgetary mean what you'll actually reduce in your debt service over the next bunch of years. So, and, and yeah, I'm not sure of Cheryl's comment, but also a good sign, besides twelve bids, because that's a lot of bids. Seven of them came in in the last 20 seconds. And usually what they do is they sharpen their pencil, hopefully getting some interest in the bonds. And to have that happen, yeah, we, we hit it right. And Matt, I'm sorry if I worded you Monday with, because I, I was kind of apprehensive where the sale might be, because it's been a really tough market. And then to see the rates, I said, "Well..."
That's a big one.
Good. Thank, thank our whole team, Clark and...
Yes.
Yeah, thank you guys for all the hard work.
I found you guys to be great. You know, wonderful.
So, I don't know if they don't have to read that entire...
The vote is, is relatively simple. Um, there are a bunch of different votes. The first one is simply saying you're authorizing the treasurer to issue these refunding bonds and to refund as many of the 2011 bonds as she deems appropriate. The second vote is saying, "And you are now awarding the sale of the 12,825,000 to JP Morgan at a purchase price." And there's the, the benefit of the premium. You were selling 12,825,000 dollars of bonds, but you're actually getting paid a little over 14 million, 14,79,949 dol- 949 dollars. And they'll have the following interest rates. The third vote simply says that there wasn't a preliminary official statement prepared. This is the document that goes out to the world and says if you want to bid, town's taking bids on Monday. And you're also preparing a final official statement. That has all the actual results. The fourth statement, the fourth vote down there says the bonds are subject to redemption, which means depending where the market is, you could redeem these bonds again in eight years. Um, the first vote on the second page, um, is saying you're gonna, um, agree to, to execute and deliver continuing disclosure undertaking. You've been doing that anyway, but the SEC rules now require you to update the disclosure areas to the market, to the secondary market. People who might be buying and selling these bonds, who know what's going on in Douglas and aren't relying on many several-year-old document. The next vote is to establish post- issuance compliance policy. That is something the treasurer is to do, just to make sure that in the future, um, you don't do anything that might jeopardize the tax exempt status of the bonds. And the final vote, um, says then you can do anything else that's necessary. Um, and finally, that last paragraph says this is all done in compliance with the open meeting laws.
Remove approval of the resolutions as presented to the board.
Second. Made by Hal, seconded in stereo by Tim and Dave. Any further discussion on the matter? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, now unfortunately, I don't have the bond documents. They didn't come in for you to sign tonight.
Can I use your pen?
So, I think we expect them by Thursday.
You probably, yeah, Thursday, Federal Express.
Morning.
Whenever Federal Express usually delivers.
I need at least three of you to sign. Like, are you available between Thursday evening and Friday?
Yep.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get an answer.
Okay.
Do we have any other future bonding?
That we're going out, not, I, I don't have any time.
Yeah, I know. So, everything is, this is it for the...
Nice job.
This'll...
For a little while.
This'll be for a little while.
Yes.
This was the big one. This was the 20 million dollar for the school project.
Thank you.
Sure. Alright.
Did you sign two? There's two. I need one for us and one for council.
Uh, see, I gotta pay attention. My bad.
What do we use as bond counsel these days?
The Lockwood Ward, which is...
Thank you very much.
Uh, the senior person there is Rick Manley from Ward Ropes and Gray. So, it goes back a few years.
My old friend.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Alright, so, this brings us to retiree insurance and possible votes.
What's up?
You don't need to do this. I can go over.
I guess. Yeah, it'll only take two seconds.
Okay. I'll be right with you.
Some of the documents are in the water.
Yeah.
I don't think you need any documents.
Okay.
On this one.
Yeah.
We got our renewals. Um, 2.4% on the PPO.
Which is not our largest plan.
Yeah, 0.9% on the HMO. This is for retirees, about ninety-some odd covered lives, ninety-eight. Something like that. The vast, vast majority are in the PPO. Um, so I think we're just gonna agree to that. There's not a lot of there there in terms of being able to save. But this is a chapter 30B requirement. We split it 30/30 with our retirees. Fifty-fifty.
Yep.
Yeah, that adds up, up to a hundred. That number hundreds meant tough this week. Um, yeah, so that's, that's kind of where we are. It doesn't give us that much of a window into what the main rate will do. Um, we are in the last year of our existing health care contract, so we're planning on going on to market for a one-year renewal. So, kind of mentioned this to the board once already. Um, I've been shown some preliminary claim numbers for this year that would tend to indicate that we're running a little hot. Um, I'm in a different place than I used to be with the credibility of all the information presented to me, so I'm gonna wanna probably investigate those, those claims and just verify the numbers. Our target's 85% loss ratio. We're running about ninety-two, ninety-two and a half. You sense, so if we were in a early year of our contract, we would expect fairly, uh, a market, market rate of change plus increase, which would be somewhere between, which would be over eight percent since the market's at eight. Uh, we're hoping to do better than that if we go out to bid for this, this one-year contract and, and get some competition and then see where we go from there.
I was still working on the potential cooperation with other communities, too.
So, in terms of major developments this week, the two consulting groups that approached this from completely different angles and have different ways to save money and to improve the product, finally had their meeting and decided they would work extremely well together. They're very excited to be working together. So, I think the joint purchasing group that we end up putting together is gonna be probably one of the most innovative in the Commonwealth. I'm pretty excited about it. So, I look forward to seeing what they have for estimated rates and, and costs.
The only thing I would add to that is that we did meet with the IAC and they also approved, um, Tufts as a retiree.
So, are we looking for a vote just to, just to include that as a, that'll be our budget estimate for retiree health insurance? And we might as well ask for your vote on just to approve 2.4 and 0.9.
So moved. Second.
Made by Dave, seconded by Mike. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The existing carrier?
Tufts is yes.
Good.
Thank you. Have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi.
I'll be at the finance committee if you'd like to join us after.
Okay, we're glad you found time to join us.
Gene?
Gene.
She's coming back. If they stumble on this, just tell them to set it aside and I'll go in.
Okay. You'll be in after it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the next is to accept the deed for North Village Playground Parcel.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for fitting in tonight. I think I have a busy agenda and I'm sure you wanna get home and watch the game. So, um, I'll try to be brief. Um, here for two things. Uh, the first is the playground parcel for North Village. Um, uh, my name is Ed Tykle. I represent North Brown LLC, who's the developer of, uh, North Village condominium, an affordable local initiative project up on North Street. And one of the provisions in our comprehensive permit for this project was to provide, uh, a playground for the town on the parcel that's immediately adjacent to the entranceway and, and on North Street. So, we have completed the, the construction of the playground. The deed's been reviewed by Town Council and so we're here tonight to, to present that to the, to the board. Um, and the second issue is relating to an amendment to the amended memorandum of understanding that was entered into, uh, between the developer and the Board of Selectmen back in 2009, which was a precursor to the comprehensive permit and became incorporated into the comprehensive permit. Uh, one of the provisions of that memorandum of understanding provided, uh, dealt with, um, water supply and fire protection for the project during the permitting process. Uh, the low pressure in, in that area of town and, and the water supply was identified. And in order to address that, um, and because it was a fairly densely populated area of town and also adjacent to the industrial parcel that, that the town wanted to develop, we proposed donating a water tower, uh, parcel to, to the town, which was the high point in, in that area of town. Uh, and in the event that the, the town didn't construct the water tower by the time that we were ready to build the project, uh, the, this section of the MOU also provided for, uh, the installation of a booster pump, which would boost the water pressure, uh, up to a level that, that the fire department was, was comfortable with. In terms of fire protection, the, the existing water supply system provides adequate domestic water supply for the, uh, for the project. So, this is basically dealing with, with fire protection. Um, as the board may recall, a couple of years ago, I was before you and presented the deed for the, for the water, uh, tower parcel. And so, we then, uh, went ahead and constructed the, the project and made provision for the booster pump, uh, in the event that the, the tower wasn't constructed, uh, last spring when we got ready to, um, installed the booster pump. We're informed, number one, that the town wasn't intending to build a water tower in that section of town. I guess the town has adequate water supply and didn't, uh, feel the need for, for additional, uh, water tank. And, uh, secondly, that the, uh, the infrastructure, the, the line on, on North Street, uh, an eight-inch line, uh, wouldn't handle a water, uh, the booster pump weren't, if it was turned on. So, uh, we started discussions with the water department to come up with alternatives, uh, and then got other town officials involved, the fire department, the town engineer, town administrator. And, uh, Fire Chief came up with the, with a solution of installing a si- a fire cistern as an alternative. Again, domestic water supply is adequate. The, the issue was having enough water on site in, in the event that there was a fire. So, we worked with the, with town officials and come up with an amendment to the, to the MOU, which addresses that issue, the fire cistern, uh, issue. And, and so we're going to install that. In addition, provide the fire department with some additional hoses and other apparatus in order to, to utilize the, the, uh, the cistern. So, that, I think, is it.
Is that an apparatus specific only to this, um, project or location?
No, it's a, well, it's a five-inch hose. They, they have, the, the fire department now has a four-inch hose. And they're, um, because when you get a certain distance away from the cistern, you, you're supposed to be able to go, I don't know, 2,000 feet away from the cistern. But once you get beyond 800 feet from the cistern, you, you lose some of the efficiency with a four-inch hose. So, uh, because the, the furthest part of the, the project is about 1,000 feet away from the cistern, so we agreed to provide the five-inch hose.
So, what does that five-inch hose interoperate elsewhere?
Yeah, so it will improve the ability of Douglas Fire Department all across town.
That's what I'm thinking.
And it puts the fire department in a position to be able to serve other cisterns contemplated by the bylaw or the subdivision regulation in front of Planning Board to make this a policy of the town for subdivisions of, is it ten or more?
I think that's what they're talking about.
It's ten or more homes.
Right, right now, a lot, as you know, a lot of the town isn't, uh, doesn't have any, uh, water supply and no hydrant. So, uh, if you have a fire in a subdivision that's, that's not served by public water, that basically you're relying on wherever the fire department comes to with, in the, in the truck. Uh, and so after this, this issue was discussed, the, the fire chief thought, "Well, gee, this is a good idea. Maybe we should do this for the whole town." So, I think what he's proposed to the Planning Board is, is to amend, I think, to amend the regulations, uh, to, to require cisterns in, in all subdivisions. So, it, it would be useful for, for other subdivisions.
The new, new hose stays at the fire department or is it in the...
Well, it's actually, well, it's on the truck. We're actually providing hoses for four trucks.
Right. So, we've upgraded from four to five for every, every fire. So, we can get more water on.
Yeah.
Goes quicker though.
Oh, it's good.
Yeah.
So, make the fire go up quicker too, I don't know.
Hopefully.
Theory, yeah. Okay.
So...
Been a long time, 2009.
It has been a long time. It's been an awful long time. Uh, but, and we'll get there.
Market conditions and everything else, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, it was from when we got approved in 2010 to, to about 2015 or 16. It was basically market conditions. And it's a, it's a big project, so it took a long time to, to get going. And it's a long drive. I mean, I don't know if anybody's been up there.
It took a ride through, yeah.
Yeah. So, that's it.
So, Mr. Chairman, the, the town engineer does believe this is a good step to take. Um, it only recommends that you approve contingent upon the ZBA process, which is a comprehensive permit. We'll be making the same discussion in front of them. It's really kind of because of the scheduling of the meetings, they need to go first. But if you approve contingent upon their approval, then that night, everything can be sewn up and the work will be complete on this. Um, that's a, that's a perfectly intelligent way to go. That's the recommendation of Jay Talon and our Land Use Council as well. Uh, as far as the deed goes, I think compliments to North Village. They did a very nice job. It's a beautiful playground and, uh, meets the request of the Recreation Commission for its fencing.
Playground have a name yet?
No.
The Hal Davis Playground.
No.
You don't want to put the old playground.
We can find somebody more illustrious in the town deserving.
I'm not sure we could.
You are the world's most interesting selectman.
Well, I'll make a motion then that we accept the deed as it was, um, presented in our packet.
Second.
Made by Tim and seconded by Mike.
Do we need to make that subject to the ZBA actually?
Not the deed.
Okay.
The only reason we're doing the, the MOU is because it was signed by the Board of Selectmen originally. Ordinarily, any changes to the comprehensive permit would just be the ZBA, because you guys had done it originally. That's why we're here with you first to, to get you to approve it. And then, as Matt said, we'll go to the ZBA and get them to incorporate it as part of the comp permit.
I have a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we'd be looking for another motion on the amendment, making a contingent upon ZBA.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Mike and seconded by Tim. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's the deed. There is no... I don't think, you, you don't have the original of that. And then the, the amendment, I think. What do we do with this one?
Pass it around. Okay. This amendment, the amendment's outside.
Oh, okay, alright.
So, that brings us to...
Two copies, right.
What's going on being signed?
Do you want me to just come by tomorrow and pick them up?
Yeah. First thing in the morning.
I think you thought of mine.
Excuse me? Thank you.
Thank you.
What made you the big cheese? Alright, so, at long last, we get to ratify the firefighter EMT union contract and possible votes.
That's why you see that my bald spot in the back of my head shows up.
You're afraid of that as a baloney spot.
My fryer took.
Careful, hey, Chris.
When do we execute the deed?
Alright, we see. So, we heard at, uh, just about 1:59 and 59 seconds, uh, today on a two o'clock deadline, from the firefighter union that they accept the contract. And when I take them at their word, that that means they've ratified it. Uh, and now it goes to town meeting for ratification. I'll speak quickly to two documents, one the contract itself and the second to a fiscal impact statement, which I'll circulate when we get there. Uh, this contract is, um, a law, you know, work that was in progress for quite some time. I think we can say that we have a progressive document. It's one of the more forward-thinking firefighter contracts I've worked on. This is the third firefighter contract I've settled with three different municipal employers in the last five years. And this is probably the, you know, the most workable, uh, sustainable arrangement with this particular, uh, group of workers and the skills that they bring to the town. Um, we have a lot of the usual boilerplate around management rights and who's covered. Uh, we did update this document for the so-called Janus decision by the Supreme Court, which deals with how, uh, agency fees are charged or not charged to non-union members if they should choose to not participate in the union. There are only seven people here. None of them currently take that path. Uh, we've established in Article VII, uh, a seniority system, uh, which will play into everything from promotions to awarding of overtime and other privileges that are tied to seniority. There are a number of conditions of employment. When this contract was originally settled with the town many years ago, um, the Douglas firefighters were represented by the Teamsters. And the Teamsters had actually a very thoughtful and comprehensive drug testing policy and, and other contract boilerplate. Those conditions of employment appear in Article IX on pages seven through 12. Uh, I don't think there's anything new to draw your attention to, uh, when it comes to the, uh, just, I actually will go to section 9.08, which is on page eight. At the chief's discretion, the town will pay members of the bargaining unit for up to 48 hours of non-department training. Uh, we took the stance overall as a management team that we want to encourage every member of the Douglas Fire Department to get as much training as possible. That we'd support them professionally and where possible, if the resources exist, um, support them financially as well to upgrade their skills. The notion being that with only seven, every single person, uh, who's on a duty crew, that's some, most of the time is just two people and sometimes three, uh, needs to be fully up to snuff and, you know, arrive with their acting order so that they can manage other qualified fighters who come to events. The, um, probation, discipline, and grievance procedures were brought into line with the police contract to mirror those, um, provisions. The hours of work, the town runs, uh, a nine-day rotation with three different duty crews. Each duty crew works three 24-hour shifts during a nine-day rotation, which means it's an average of 56 hours per week, which is a legal maximum, um, slightly above the legal maximum of 53 hours a week, but would go up to 56 if we schedule overtime, which is basically the system that the town has adopted. This, for a small town, is the most cost-effective way to organize a fire department. Um, the town has opted to use a 28-day lookback for the payment of overtime. So, um, there are three-plus rotations of the schedule during lookback period. The Fair Labor Standards Act only requires the payment of overtime, the time worked. So, if you take a 24-hour shift off during that 28 days, you have to work another 24 hours before you're eligible to get overtime. So, this is one of the more thoughtful ways to keep overtime under control. It still does get paid, and we'll talk about that in fiscal impact. But that is the system in place in the town of Douglas. Uh, holidays and overtime are all the usual. We did, at the last minute, agree that we would carve out one small issue from the 28-day lookback, and that is holdover time will be paid in 30-minute increments in... if you are held over after you have already worked a full twenty-four hour shift. I think after discussing this with the chief and with Selectmen Cortez, we felt like we had some sympathy for that. If you've pulled the twenty-four and then you get an ambulance call at six AM, one hour before shift change, and you're, now you're running a little bit ragged because you're at hour twenty-six or hour twenty-seven of the day, we will carve that out, that will be paid in overtime. Frankly, I didn't even bother putting that in the fiscal impact because I just don't think it happens all that long in Florida to be. It's more of a, it's a principle of the matter, it's not really a financial issue. Uniforms and clothing allowance, we expanded the ability of firefighters, they get a standard issue in year one. In year two of their employment, they get a reimbursable account, so they have to buy items from a list. We expanded the list to include a Class A uniform or the elements, the key elements of the Class A uniform. Our firefighters have been going to formal functions, in some cases without being able to dress what is standard in the profession in the Class A uniform, the dress uniform. So we had firefighter of the year being honored by Governor Baker last year, and we're scrambling at the last minute to get the guy a proper Class A uniform. So we spent the cost with him, we'll take care of that going forward in the clothing allowance. We've added.
You haven't had a daughter of teenage years yet. It happens.
We've added a fiscal fitness incentive to mirror that that is offered to the Police Officers Union. We do want to encourage our employees to maintain their physical fitness. It's four hundred fifty dollars a year. Once again, the chief must approve the expenditure. So only those eligible items can be reimbursed and they're kept at four fifty, and there are a number of items that are excluded in the provisions. The cancer presumption that was signed by Governor Baker kind of made our cancer presumption less unique. It is actually unique, and we're probably one of only a dozen or so that negotiated this into a contract, but now it's the law and Commonwealth. But we did also negotiate an infectious contagious disease presumption. For the attorneys in the room, it's a rebuttable presumption. So there is a process for which the town can contest a diagnosis and preserve its position. The last, probably what everybody wants to cut to the chase on, and I'll pass this around. I, of course, shorted myself my. I kind of know. In terms of fiscal impact statements, by far the largest change here is that we have established a pay grade for the rank of lieutenant. Up to this point, the lieutenant received a fifty cent per hour stipend for serving in the role of lieutenant, which was a very tiny difference between an EMT paramedic, which has its own morale impact. But also, the town has adopted the incident management system, and the bottom line of that system is somebody's got to be in charge. And you have to pay them accordingly if you want a good, stable system with accountability. A quick reminder to everyone who wore, who's watching at home at some point, and not bored necessarily, but our ambulances carry fairly powerful drugs that are kept in a secure location, and they are inventoried in a very, very disciplined and stringent manner. Being accountable for powerful things like fentanyl, that they use for cardiac condition and other things, you're signing off on some pretty significant responsibility. It was considered to be less than constructive to have lieutenants earn such a tiny stipend over the paramedics that they manage. So that's been increased, so we will now use the step-five paramedic hourly rate as the basis, and then we'll add a percentage bump to that rate to come to the lieutenant rate. And we build that up over three years, and we probably won't go past what we've done these three years. In year one, it'll be a three percent bump over the paramedic's pay. In year two, five percent, and year three, seven percent. By way of comparison, the rank differences in the police department are closer to twelve, thirteen percent, in some cases higher. So we are getting there, but we're not going to go all the way to that, to that level. What is the fiscal impact of that? Fiscal impact statements are tricky because you have to compare, you have to have a basis from which you start the discussion. And that happens to be this year, fiscal eighteen. And you take every year of the contract, the total cost of the department estimated, and you subtract the base year to get to the delta, and then you add up the delta for three years. That is the total impact of the contract, which on base pay was a hundred and five thousand. There's a nine thousand dollar differential for the fitness benefit, and there's some overtime impact. And I think at the bottom line there, very last line on the page, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars is the difference from fiscal eighteen to fiscal twenty-one added up for all three years. That last row in the chart though, I show you the budgetary impact. So that is how much change will occur from one year to the next in the budget in order to accommodate the changes that we contemplate. That number is much smaller, obviously, because it's a year-over-year change. I really did feel like as we went through this negotiation, we could handle twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand dollars in year one goes down to about between fifteen and seventeen thousand dollars by year three. That's the savings we have to find elsewhere in the budget to pay for this. And frankly, I think we could do that. It wasn't out of my comfort zone to do that, to try to stabilize the tax rate and still get a professional fire department out of it. As I said, they ratified this, so I think both sides would probably complain about it, which means we'd probably end up in a good spot.
Trying to understand the total change from base is a hundred and five, and yet the columns nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one don't add up.
Well, they.
Oh, that's the year-over-year impact, so the first year would be twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
So twenty-twenty, it would be an eighteen thousand dollar differential, twenty-twenty-one is a fifteen thousand dollar differential. So that number's actually going downhill off of our forecast.
The budgetary impact, Hal, is the total amount we will budget from one year to the next.
Why don't you have to budget the hundred and five for that increase?
Because that, you're using that compared to the base, which is the year before the full year. So every single thing that's in here, whether it's the one point seven five percent cola, the lieutenant bump, everything compared to the original year, the base year. If we never negotiate another contract with them ever, it would just be locked into what they were last year. That's what the total cost would be.
Okay, alright, okay, so you have to figure what it would be under the.
Right. I think in fairness, you have to disclose both numbers and your fiscal impact. You have to show people, yeah, it's going to cost that much, the actual budgetary impact is less as we grow each year. Any other questions?
Could you speak to the fitness bump and what it is we're looking to do for what we're allowing them to pay for?
So, to turn to that section, which is.
Article twenty, page eighteen.
Twenty on page eighteen. I said four fifty.
Four seventy-five.
It's four seventy-five, so it's going to be a little bit more than, I'm glad I put the word preliminary on this estimate, but seven times four seventy-five is going to be whatever it is, it's still going to be forty-nine, thirty-three hundred dollars instead of the one fifty. Four hundred and seventy-five dollars per year, that's a cap, that's a reimbursable amount. So it's your gym membership fee, a fitness program or purchase of home gym equipment, not including footwear apparel, any extended warranty, service plans, or installation costs. So you buy a treadmill for three thousand dollars, you can get four hundred and seventy-five dollars of that reimbursed to you from the town. The rest is you. You buy a warranty on it, that's your issue. You want to buy sneakers to hop on your treadmill, that's your issue. This is just for.
Would make the most sense, seven applied to a gym membership.
Yeah.
Pretty much covers it.
The language is there to do that, right?
The language is there for that.
We could get seven together and purchase equipment and make a gym in somebody's basement.
Well, I'd just say that.
Bearing in mind, we have equipment at the station already.
Right. That's my thought, is are we committing to an upgrade there, or this is truly individual?
Well, it's truly individual, I think, I think it's, I'd argue that it's reasonable, Selectmen, because these guys work three days out of nine, the other six days they're on their own time. We want to encourage them to engage in healthy habits those six days, not just the three that get with us.
No, I'm with you, I just look at what we do with the police department. Some of our police are well-built, right? And that doesn't happen overnight, they work hard at it, and I think, you know, they would do well.
We have the same arrangement with them, where we have a fitness allotment, but we also do have a small gym where they can work out, so.
It's pretty standard. Like, I know that what we do at Comcast is we'll actually offer you a discount on your health insurance premium. So. That all looks good to me, well done.
So I swear, I think town meeting would be looking for your thoughts on the matter, if you might want to take a vote. And that way we can signal to the union where we stand with them.
I'd move that we accept the contract as written. Second.
Made by Dave, seconded by Mike. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? No? Good. Again, nice job, guys.
Thank you. I'll go on record to say Matt did the lion's share of the work here and he did it well.
Selectmen Cortez had all the credibility in the room.
I don't know about that.
Helped us on a couple.
Item five is to open the warrant, insert or remove any articles, and then close and sign the warrant and possible votes. Is there anything that we need to modify, change, insert, or remove on said warrant?
No, the fire contract was left in, correct?
Yep.
Just refreshing my memory, so we don't need to insert anything.
Yes, I'll just quickly explain one thing. You'll see that the fire wages and ambulance wages, so I'm on the warrant, page one of four. I think everybody knows this, it has been the practice of the finance director to underfund the wages in fire and ambulance so that the ambulance receipts will catch up, and by the time we get to fall town meeting, a budgetary correction is necessary. So this set of numbers includes all of the terms of the contract plus what was short from the original. Of that, sixty-four thousand, only twenty of that's coming from the contract. The other was money that was not in the budget until receipts came in from ambulance. I think Jean explained to everyone before why she's going to reduce the total insurance employees' benefits request from eighty thousand to thirty-five thousand. She's going to fund that from new growth and a different setting. And I've just... I have added... Let's see where she grabbed it. Oh, no. The civil defense expense was not in the prior version of the warrant. It doesn't require you to reopen the warrant because we're just making small changes to this, but that's two thousand dollars. I've, I realize getting people to answer questions at the State House for fifteen hundred bucks, I might as well just go up there with my hat in my hand and I collect it on the side of the street if it's sane. So getting fifteen hundred bucks out of the forest fund for code red just turned into chasing my tail trying to get people to answer my questions. So we'll just put it in, free cash certified at a decent number, so we'll just look to do it from the funds.
Did you issue the code red, ma'am?
What's that?
Did you issue the code red?
I did not issue the code red, Mr. Chairman, though. Yeah, there are times when it might be helpful, I'll give you an example just from this week. We had a major truck fire on Route sixteen, closed traffic down in both directions. It would have been nice to have had the ability to press a button, send a message to everybody who might commute on Route sixteen, go a different route if you have any other way, because you're going to sit there for a while. Because the truck was fully engulfed, so. Little things like that make a big difference in people's lives and not sitting in traffic.
And direct them over the bridge and see the street if necessary.
Exactly, see the street because that is open to the public. The only other thing I wanted to draw your attention to is a possible change, or I just want to explain how it's going to work, is there is Article Eight to enter into a municipal energy purchase contract. I think I explained this before, but I went to greater depth with our consultant today, what's going to happen, or last week. She is going to go to market with our energy needs for years four and five immediately before town meeting on November thirteenth so that we get a price that we could strike. Within forty-eight hours, the price would be no good after that. We will go into town meeting that night with her recommendation as to whether or not that price is something we should take or we should leave on the table. We may pass over this article completely if her advice is it's too high. So that's the only changes I had, Mr. Chairman, to.
I think Mr. Hughes is reading that article.
I think Mr. Hughes is reading all articles that come from the Board of Selectmen.
I can't be in the lead. We all wanted some.
It just means that you'll be performing as town moderator at the spring town meeting. So as I didn't, so I didn't really need to open the warrant, so I don't need to.
We need to close it though, correct?
We closed it at the last meeting. So.
Yeah, there's been no changes, so it's ready to rock and roll.
We just need to sign it then.
We just need to vote to sign, we don't even need to vote.
I don't think, you signed it last time, right?
Yeah, maybe we did.
Did we sign the warrant? Alright, so we're good. This brings us to the fun part. My all-time favorite. The Town Administrator's Evaluations and Goals and Possible Votes, which, after multiple iterations of a evaluation process.
A tool.
A tool.
A tool.
So, which I will go on record saying, thank God there was clarification because you are almost bound to a life of mediocrity.
I know, bro.
Right.
The one to five to ten thing?
One to five, one to ten.
I'm going on record saying, on a scale of one to ten, five being the best, that kind of sets you into a bad spot. You were rated off of ten areas, which were communication, direction setting, standard setting, representation of the town and board, personnel management, collective bargaining and contract, operations management, fiscal management, asset management, and risk management. So as not to overly belabor the point, you did not score anywhere on your rating below an eight, anywhere. You were primarily nines and tens from all of us across the boards in just about every aspect. Your total overall rating was four seventy-nine, which came out to a ninety-five point eight. So you're a high A student, man.
No mediocrity there at all.
No, no, I guess I'm very flattered, so I thank the board for.
So.
Done an excellent job.
You really have. I threw some notes together that I wanted to at least share that I'd sent off to Suzanne to put them into the agenda, which she didn't print, so. I have them on my phone. So in the commentary that I wrote is it's my opinion that Matt has done an outstanding job as the town administrator for the town of Douglas. He was instrumental in providing guidance, revealing the weakness in the town budget itself, which allowed us to accurately communicate to the residents the overall need for a Proposition Two and a Half override. He has successfully negotiated collective bargaining agreements that are both mutually beneficial to the town and the rank and file of the collecting bargaining units. You've reeled in department spending and provided oversight on the purchasing of office supplies and other materials, giving the town a standard and cost-effective means in which to do its day-to-day operations. You've dealt with the public in a professional and a gracious manner in times of crisis and emergency, and you show true leadership, and I look forward to working with you for many years to come. I want to go on record that it's my recommendation, and we'll propose this formally at the spring town meeting, is to award you with a merit-based increase that would bring you up to the salary level of the previous town administrator of a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars annually. I feel that the hard work and dedication that you've given to this town definitely rates putting you on par with where our previous administrator was sitting, and we definitely look forward to better things to come. I think because of the timing, as we're so close to town meeting, not saying that you don't deserve the. you don't deserve the, the rate increase immediately, but I think it would make more sense for us to put this into the spring town meeting, formally move forward with this merit-based increase for you. That's about all that I have on it.
Nice job.
And I'd be anxious to see as, as I'm sitting in front of the board, that's my proposal. We can discuss it on future agendas, but I'm just curious if anybody feels that that's inaccurate, or?
No, I, I'm thrilled, you know? I think as it's a board, we rely heavily on the town administrator to make certain that we're charting a path that makes sense for the townspeople, and it's been seamless, right? This transition, it's like you were a longtime resident and knew the, the underpinnings of the town from day one, and I'm contemplating here, I was reading, Susan Spencer from the telegram was contemplating which board Selectman meeting to go to. She had like three or four. She obviously didn't choose here, but I would-
We have snacks, too.
I'd make a motion that we tweet her ten thumbs up for the town administrator, because-
I would second that.
The people should know that we're in good hands.
I, I'd add to that, I agree with everything that's been said already, and you hear cliches about people in management, you hear things like thinking outside the box and looking around corners, and I think those are the things that apply. I mean, you've committed in a relatively short period of time, you've streamlined the town's operations, and you've found things that can be fixed at little and no cost, and other things that can be fixed that saves the town money. And it's really unique, and I think it's really a testament to your character. I know how hard you work. When I come here, you're always here, and I just appreciate everything you've done for the town, and I think you make our lives easier, too. I don't know what to say beyond that, but Tim used the word thrilled, and I'd certainly back that up. I think you're doing an excellent job.
I'm just, you've obviously handled all the routine things and then displayed a lot of imagination in taking us in directions that we hadn't thought of, saving potentially revenue growth in the town, and done that with a nice personality and dealing with everybody I know from the town that's approached you, so we should get some applause for picking Matt, I think.
That's right. All of it.
Makes us look better.
Yeah.
Nice job.
It's a legacy vote, that one.
Yeah.
And I have to say, I like the fact that I have never, like, as a chairman, sometimes like a resident or somebody will hit you with, like, out of left field, and you'll get a surprise. And I, when I first took over, well, started as chair, I got quite a few of them that hit me out of left field, and I can say that since you've been sitting in the position of mayor, I have no surprises. So I'm well apprised of everything and anything that's going on in the town, and you briefed me well enough on it that I'm able to speak to it very intelligently, which is difficult for me, because speaking intelligently on any level, you're a lot. But no, you've done an excellent job.
Well, Mr. Chairman, thanks to you and through you to all members of the board for the kind words, I appreciate it. I do work hard, I'm passionate about good government and being a servant of the people, and that shows.
Good government and coming from Rhode Island, and you say good government.
That's what I'm not working for.
And you haven't introduced those Rhode Island coffee milkshake things that they like down there?
It's a cabinet, Selectman, and they're delicious.
That's the old, you know, frapp cabinet, a cabinet-
Frapp is you guys.
Frapp is us.
Frapp's with ice cream, milkshakes without it, I guess.
Right.
It's a cabinet, strange difference.
I, I think it's, it's just with ice cream. I think there was, at one time, there was a mixing machine that was a box, and we put the thing in and closed the door, and-
So it was a cabinet?
Right? I don't know.
Yeah, that's-
So, do we feel that we don't need to do any votes on this? I mean, we can bring it back up.
Well, we'll make a motion that we send Susan Spencer ten thumbs up via Twitter.
I'm not on Twitter, so I'm going to have to ask you to send-
I'll take care of it. No vote necessary.
No vote necessary. And do we want to table a merit increase to a later date?
Yeah, I think it probably needs some more discussion and reflection. I don't think we have to vote on it now if we can't accomplish it until the spring.
Yeah.
But I think it's, for the record, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
As you presented it tonight, I think I'd be in favor of it.
Okay. That is awesome.
Thank you.
So, I don't see a item on here. Do you have any town administrator report this evening, or are we?
Nine minutes.
Yeah, I, I can-
Nine minutes, right.
I can keep it for the first November meeting.
Okay, okay. So do we have any old business? Seeing none. Any new business? Seeing none again. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Made by Dave, seconded by Mike. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nothing else to say.